Now that all the council members are present, I call to order the October 5th meeting of the City of West Sacramento City Council, Redevelopment Successor Agency, and Finance Authority. We will begin with the land acknowledgement. We would like to acknowledge that the land on which we live, work, learn, and commune is the original homelands of the indigenous people of West Sacramento, who have stewarded this land throughout the generations. We acknowledge and we thank the original inhabitants who have occupied, maintained, and secured this place, and who still exist on this land. We respect and celebrate the many diverse indigenous peoples still connected to this land on which we gather. The council did not meet in closed session this evening, and we would like to invite our guests to join the council and staff in the pledge, which will be led by Mr. Eason Katier with the California Advocacy Director with the Hindu American Foundation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Katier. Very grateful that you let us in the pledge tonight. That brings us to Part One, which is the presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the council. As is noted on our agenda, we are prohibited by state law from discussing or taking any action on items that are brought up under Item One, but it provides an important opportunity for a public forum. We do ask that anyone wishing to address the council on this or any other item this evening to fill out a request-to-speak card and return it to the clerk. We also recommend this for our consent agenda and presentations, and we request you to submit the speak to clerk now for those. In front of the clerk, there is a timer to ensure that everyone has a chance to be heard. We ask that all comments be limited to no more than three minutes. Also in front of the clerk is an analog flip chart which indicates which agenda item the council is currently considering. We also recognize that for some reason, speaking in public can cause anxiety, so we request that there be no applause or boos, cat calls, or other demonstrations. Furthermore, so that we may maintain a civil discourse here in the chambers, we ask that those in attendance and those who address the city council abide by the code of conduct posted by the request-to-speak cards and on the podium and not speak in loud, threatening, offensive, abusive, or other disrespectful language that disrupts, disturbs, or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting. Next is our public comment. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is Mike Sanchez.
Good evening, everyone. I am again here speaking in defense of my home at 213 Third Street. I strongly oppose the removal of my historic house and property for an access alley. I've heard from staff that an alternate option is being explored to leave my house but remove half of our property. Staff's tone is that this is news we should be excited about. However, the idea of sacrificing our property is anything but exciting. It feels as though the city is telling us, "We're only going to take one hand; be happy you have one left." If our family was included in these decisions, we would be able to express this sentiment and share alternate ideas. It's beginning to feel like transparency and cooperation are not values held by city officials. We have a beautifully-kept yard with history that parallels our home. The two majestic sequoias in the yard were planted by my great-grandparents decades ago. These redwood giants originated from Mont La Salle where my uncle prepared to serve as a brother of the Christian schools. Today, they stand hundreds of feet tall, provide shade to the neighborhood, and are often admired by people passing by. The many fruit trees provide large yields of fruit every year. My grandfather, Richard, would share oranges, grapefruits, peaches, plums, persimmons, and pomegranates with neighbors and strangers alike. The entire neighborhood loved and cherished Richard for his kindness and generosity with our fruit. Again, we are here to advocate for options for an access alley through B Street where an existing road is already in place. Last week, we were informed by staff that a B Street alternative would cause delays as it would require levy reinforcement that would be a two- to four-year process. If planning dates back to 2014, how is it that the city has spent eight years ignoring a two- to four-year option that would not jeopardize anyone's home? Instead, I'm led to believe that West Sacramento's staff thought it would be more convenient to remove my home, more convenient to take in an old Mexican-American home whose residents have contributed to this community and country for the past 80 years. I saw Mayor Guerrero recently traveled to the White House, and in her Facebook post, she wanted us to hear President Biden say, "Hispanic history is American history." My grandfather Santos Marquez helped countless Mexican families settle and integrate into this community and country. He offered a wide range of support, including his own roof at 213 Third Street, to Mexican immigrants as they arrived. My grandfather, Richard Duran eagerly left to serve in World War II and later Korea. That is a small piece of the Mexican-American history that stands to be erased when removing Santos's majestic sequoias or Richard's fruit trees. And for what? An access alley? Removing our home and property is not an option, but other options are blatantly obvious. To say otherwise seems shortsighted. I urge you to look at a B Street option. The dilapidated apartments and neighboring structures, most have no running water, electricity, and are full of squatters. If delays are necessary to find another option, so be it. I urge you to make this topic public so my family, the many community supporters and voters can have a say in this. Despite the suffering caused by this process, we will continue to advocate for our home, property, and history with every resource available, including legal action. Prove to this community that you are more than just figureheads. We look to your support as champions in this fight. I greatly appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez, and also thank you for your service.
Our next speaker is Annette Sanchez.
My name is Annette Duran Sanchez. I'm here again to speak about our family property at 213 Third Street that is marked to be removed for an alley road related to the I Street Bridge replacement project. In recent weeks, we have had conversations with your staff. The first conversation was supportive to us in that the proposed road was an unsafe traffic road, a cut and reconstruct of the dilapidated apartments behind us, which is moving only some of them, would never work, and a better option would be to move the proposed road to the east on Third Street. About a week -- after about a week, the second conversation significantly shifted to the idea of going forward with an alley road which would run along our house, taking our beautiful yard and historic trees. The road would be two steps outside of our family room sliding door. The idea of that being a suggested solution to save our house is ridiculous. Our yard is an extension of our living space. We enjoy spending time out there. It's a safe space where children in our family can play. The trees in our yard were planted by my grandparents. Generations of our family have cared for them. My father was known in the neighborhood for sharing the fruit from those trees with people in the community. We were told the concerns of moving the road to B Street is that it would extend the bridge project. In a conversation with a staff member from Mayor Steinberg's office, they shared with us that Sacramento has procedures which provides a notice before the final notice to property owners or businesses that are in danger of being removed. If West Sacramento had procedures such as these in place, we could have had discussions years ago without extending timeframes to the bridge project. I believe a big issue with the city planners not wanting to change the location of the connection road to Second Street has to do with removing only part of the dilapidated apartments located behind us versus taking all of them down now. It's seen as a lesser cost to only remove part of the apartments and relocate only some of the tenants versus all of them now. The apartments look barely livable with boarded-up windows and squatters living in them. I have started a petition with signatures from our surrounding neighbors and people in our community who are offering us much support for our property to remain standing. We will make every effort for our story and request to be heard, including newspaper and television stories in the coming weeks. This action to our property has been very stressful. It has engulfed our lives, sent us on a sudden roller coaster of emotion, and has affected our health from worry. We ask that you please consider other options. Thank you.
Susan Lemus.
Good evening. My name is Susan Duran Lemus, and as the eldest child of Richard and Amalia Duran, I am here on behalf of my four siblings and myself to respectfully request your support to save our family home. In December of 2013, our lives changed when our mother became very ill and required 24-hour care. We united as a family to care for our parents in their home from that day forward. During this period, there was someone with them at all times. I handled all of their finances, and we all reviewed their mail. During this time, no one knocked on the door, nor did we receive any type of written notification indicating our home would be directly impacted by the I Street Bridge project. Our family has been informed that we should have known about this because there were community outreach meetings. I ask you to think about this statement. Holding these community outreach meetings is not the way anyone, nor any family, should find out their house will be demolished. Our parents took great pride in maintaining the property, just as our grandparents did. Our father could frequently be found with a paintbrush in his hand as he kept the house looking freshly painted. In fact, the mail carrier at the time jokingly called him Picasso. Up until a couple of months before he passed away, at the age of 91, he was out working in the yard. He was fascinated by the bridge project and used to tell us that he knew he wouldn't live to see the project completed, but was very excited about the changes. He would be devastated and heartbroken to find out that the house he so cherished would be torn down for an access street. In 2005, the Sacramento Bee interviewed our parents and featured an article with a picture of them standing in front of 213 Third Street. This article focused on the neighborhood renewal happening all around them and how they embraced the changes, knowing their property would still stand. Now today, this family home that was special enough to be featured in the Sacramento Bee is slated to be removed. Again, we ask that you please support our family as we all embrace the new bridge project, just as our grandparents and parents we know would also, but without our family home being destroyed for an access street when there are other options. Thank you.
Matt Delgado.
Good evening, council members. Last time I was here, I recall both Mike Sanchez and Annie Sanchez invited you down to their home so you could see what the project is going to be looking like. Considering that we're still here, it seems that none of you took them up on that offer, so I'd like to walk you through the neighborhood and give you an idea of what is going on, the type of home that you're going to be demolishing for this project, and what's going to be gaining access by cutting a street through their home. So directly to the north of their house is what I believe to be an illegal construction. It's a home -- there's two homes on one parcel. It doesn't seem to be licensed, so you're going to leave that home. You're going to leave the home that is licensed and meant to be on that parcel, which is condemned. It's vacant. It's been vacant for at least 15 years. It's overgrown. It's full of trash. It's full of waste. The woman who's there collects skunks and is essentially just a blight on the neighborhood. Behind that are the apartments that have been referenced two or three times already this evening. They are rundown. During the rainstorms two or three weeks ago, the parking lot flooded. It remained flooded for over a week. There was no drainage. I saw people and children playing in the water. There were bikes and cars driving through the water that was up to mid-calf level, and it remained that way for over a week. Now, it's not that we want to -- anyone wants to get rid of affordable housing in West Sacramento, but knowing that those apartments will remain standing, nothing will be done to upgrade or improve those apartments, and those people will continue to go living in those conditions seems like not the best use of city resources. The properties on Second Street, there is one occupied rented property, so I'm sure he'll appreciate access to his home. However, the other three properties are vacant, abandoned, and condemned. They are fenced in. They're boarded up. The only thing living there are cats and very large rats. So when it comes to removing the oldest, and again, I mentioned this the last time, it's the oldest occupied single-family residence in Broderick. The family history there goes back at least 80 years. The house itself dates to 1888. There is one property that also dates to 1888, and it's a multifamily residence. There is no other single-family residence that is more historic or has a family that has done more for the community of West Sacramento than the Sanchez and Duran family home. So please, I would ask you one more time to come down, have a look at what this project is, and do everything in your power to influence the project from the Sacramento side and keep their home standing.
Sylvester Gilmedy.
Good evening. My name is Sylvester Gilmed Jr. I am a concerned citizen of West Sacramento and here in support of the Marquez-Duran-Sanchez family, keeping their family home from being demolished for the purpose of an access road for the I Street Bridge project. The home at 213 Third Street has resided four generations and 80 years of family ties and contributions to West Sacramento and the Broderick neighborhood. It is a shame that for purposes of social engineering, the pre-1900-built home is a pawn for an access road. It is as if the historical value of the home built before the I Street Bridge itself means nothing. Also, the fact that the family bloodline has been choosing to keep their roots at the property in question and could be displaced means less than an access road is very concerning to me, as I think of what's next and could be the history of the Broderick neighborhood, that it would only be on paper and in story only. There are seven other properties next to or behind the 213 Third Street home that could be considered for demolition in lieu of the Marquez-Duran-Sanchez home. Four of the seven are abandoned and have been for more than a decade. Another apartment property has no electricity and water in many units and has been a crime-infested place for years. The home next to the Marquez-Duran-Sanchez home is a home of despair and possible animal cruelty taking place with riverbank wildlife. I asked the city of West Sacramento, its staff, and this city council to take a hard look at the other options and an alternate route for the bridge project access road. At the last city council meeting, I invited any West Sacramento city staff and members of this council to take a walking tour with the family or myself to see in person and firsthand possible alternate routes for the access road. I did have one staff member take me up on that, so I will say that in lieu of what Matt had said. So I did have one, but there's so many of you folks right just in front of me. The invitation is still being offered again. Please even consider driving your vehicle by the 213 Third Street property to view the Marquez-Duran-Sanchez home and viewing the other surrounding properties on Third Street as well as Second Street. Aerial and Google Maps rooftops do not qualify in a nostalgic home being demolished and a well-respected generational family being displaced. Let's work together to find an alternate location that makes sense and keeps both a family and Broderick history intact. And I'd also like to say that, reiterating a sentiment of the family, I want you folks to take a look at the support right here. Take a look at that.
Natalie Fernandez.
Good evening. My name's Natalie Fernandez, fiancee to Mike Sanchez, current resident at 213 Third Street. We're obviously here to ask for your support in saving our home. As mentioned previously, Richard and Amalia Duran were excited about all of the changes going on around their home, as were Mike and I when we decided to take over the home and make it our own. Once we were alerted to the fact that our home was slated for removal as a part of the project, in researching about the plans, we were told numerous times that this outreach dates back to 2014. In June 2014, we first started reaching out. When you look on the City of Sacramento's website at those outreach programs, they were asking residents to come out and speak to, "What amenities would you like on the bridge? Would you like it to have access for bikes? What benches would you like to include?" Later on, it was asking you to choose between the nine designs that they had narrowed down. At no point on any of the City of Sacramento's website does it mention outreach to families whose homes might be removed as part of the project for these beautiful amenities on the bridge, right? And while it wasn't as easily accessed with West Sacramento, I couldn't find anything that showed that West Sacramento had communicated to its residents that you should come to these outreach meetings because your home might be removed as a part of this project. So, you know, you're left with two choices as our representatives here in West Sacramento. You can choose to continue to pass the blame. It's our fault that we didn't attend to these outreach meetings to make sure they weren't going to take our home. You could place the blame on the City of Sacramento because it's their project, and really, they are the ultimate planners. You could say that you weren't here on the city council at the time and that this was done -- decisions made prior to your involvement with our city. Or you can make the right choice, which is to open this up for conversation and help us find a better solution that doesn't remove our home. So we're very hopeful that you'll support us in this, but we need your support. This is something that is still in the hands of the City of West Sacramento. You do have control of the situation now, sitting in the city council today, and we're asking for your support in this issue. Thank you.
Guy Stevenson.
Council members, I'm here for a reason. The reason I'm here is that I support these cops. The police officers at West Sac do an outstanding job. The problem is you don't have enough over here. You have a lot of property crimes going on over here. Rite Aid's ready to close down because of the theft, forfeit, and all overdoses, drug overdoses. The problem is these men and women do not have enough police officers with West Sac. They need more police out here. Not saying saturate the city with police, but you've got 70,000 people in here. I did a study for the last 11 months, and we found that there was only three police officers on the weekends to cover the whole city of West Sac. They got new Fentanyl out. It's called Skittles. I just got an email the other day where they're putting them in Lego boxes, and that's ridiculous. In the size city that you have, you need more police. I don't want to see these law enforcement officers lateral to another agency. What's very amazing to me is Arbuckle up in Calusa County has more police than West Sacramento, but less people. And you've got 70,000 people, and that goes over 100,000 during the week. You've got people coming from the Bay Area doing crime here. You've got people coming from Sacramento that come over here and commit crimes. And we did a big study, not just me. I'm asking you to give an incentive to the police department and keep the police here. They'll come here after they've been post-certified. They'll get that training, and they'll bounce. They'll leave. They'll go to Fairfield, Solano County, or they'll go to another law enforcement agency, and you will lose them. I want them to stay here, but I also want them to retire here. And I think that the police here are really good, but they're compassion fatigue, they're stressed out, and it's because they don't have enough officers. And I'm going to keep coming to these city council meetings, and I'm going to bring more people with me that support. When I did this study, I talked to so many residents here. You know what the biggest problem was? Is when they called the police, the police wouldn't show up for an hour and a half. It's not because the police are not doing their job, they have so much to do and very little resources. I'm asking you, Mayor, I know you from the parade last year, the vets, and I don't know any other of these council members, but I will tell you that I'm going to advocate for them. I'm going to keep advocating for them, and I'm going to bring more people. And we're going to make an issue about this because it's unsafe for elderly people, and a lot of these people are not even living in West Sac doing criminal crimes. They're coming from the Bay Area, Oakland. They're coming up here, and they're robbing all these businesses. And these big businesses are saying, "Uh-uh. We've had enough." So I've talked to a lot of them, and they said, "It's sad. When you have three police officers on the weekend to cover this much area, it doesn't make any sense to me." I'm sorry, but that's how I feel, Mayor. Nice to meet you.
Scott J. Rafferty.
Practically every comment you've heard tonight reflects the consequences of an electoral system that for two decades, an unlawful electoral system, kept Broderick, Bright, and every other neighborhood north of Route 50 from having any representation on this council. That was shameful. It was more shameful when the former mayor concocted a scheme to defraud my clients and his own experts in a successful but ill-fated attempt to perpetuate this for one more election in 2020. And you came to the table to settle that. The most shameful thing is that you violated that settlement. And that should not be happening in California. But on the record, your city attorney boasted that he never intended to comply with a deadline that was intended to give new candidates a fair shot at knowing where the districts were. He also, as soon as the ink was dry, he was off with the county registrar trying to get an anti-Latino ballot question to drive a racially-charged campaign this year. This was explicitly prohibited by the settlement that you signed. And what has this done? It's set an example throughout California that the CVRA cannot be enforced, that settlements are not reliable, and that they can be violated with impunity. I just got back last night from Ontario, which is going through the same routine of willfully violating a settlement, and it's because of the five of you. And according to the city attorney, it was unanimous that you're not going to pay attorney's fees. Oh, you're paying attorney's fees to him? He lost. It's my clients that conferred the public benefit of having democracy restored to West Sacramento. And you need to answer not only to your own residents, but also to Latino voters throughout the state. Ontario was a very sad place, run by white people who were elected in the 1980s, one that's a very different town. And this is just wrong. You need to have -- you need to pay me, not because of me. It's not about me. I don't want to do any more of these cases. They're difficult. They're controversial. You make a lot of powerful enemies, but somebody has to do it. And when you set the precedent that you can violate a settlement agreement with impunity, no one can take that risk. No one else has taken it for the last five years. So do what's right and settle this, and stop an appeal that shouldn't be happening solely because -- it's solely necessary because your city attorney misled the court, and we should resolve this. So thank you for your time, but please fix this. It's wrong.
Sorry. Mr. Castaneda.
I'm sorry.
How are you doing, councilman? Nice to see you.
Can you get closer to the mic? I could barely hear you.
I wanted to ask about the apartments that they're building on Sacramento Avenue. If I could get some information on that. Are they low-income? Are they mixed? Can we get that answered, or some information about it?
We can follow up with you about that. So, yeah. If you can leave your contact information with the city clerk, then I can make sure someone reaches out to you, try to get a call for you this week.
Thank you. Thank you.
Maria Graalda.
Madam Mayor, City Council, good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. I wanted to ask the city to please support the Sanchez family, and it's my understanding when I talk to the real estate expert from the city that there had been public notices since 2011, '14, '17, and 2019. And eminent domain cases are almost impossible to win in court, so it's a losing battle. We know that, except if the city messed up and did not do proper public notice, which was back in 2014 and 2011. was back in 2014 and 2011. So, that really brings a light of hope, I hope, for the Sanchez family. But I really think that this design was done before your tenure, and that's why I hope and I sincerely believe in my heart that our mayor is not going to let this happen because it's my understanding from our expert that it is possible, because it's only 65% into the process, it is possible to do an alternate way. And of course, the worst-case scenario I understood was that some of these houses would be landlocked. But I'm sure that's not going to happen, and it's going to cost us some federal dollars from what I understand, if I understood it correctly. But there is a possible way to help the Sanchez family. So, I'm really grateful to all of you for that effort. And to, I'm really glad Mr. Rafferty came today. I think it's really important that the public, and that's why I come to share to the community, I think it's important that the public know that another community resident from the North Area did file a bar complaint because our city attorney acted as a consultant directly to a council member instead of to the mayor. And that's actually a violation of their, of their oath or whatever, I'm not sure exactly. But anyway, so that's really happening. And if any money is due, the city attorney's been making a lot of money, and some of these cases, the CVRA cases, get paid millions and millions of dollars. And so, you know, I think we need to not go further on this appeal and just pay off Mr. Rafferty because, you know, he's got a college degree to take care of too. Thank you.
We have no additional speakers.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next is our presentation's item two under the city manager's office. Presentation of proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month. And we have Mr. Eason Cutier from the California Advocacy Director, Hindu American Foundation and West Sacramento resident Sabita Condal. And I think there was one, a third person, correct?
He'll be back.
He'll be back. UC Davis physics major Vivek Seema. And I will be going down to give you the resolution.
Oh, thank you.
Proclamation of the city council, city of West Sacramento, designating October 2022 as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month, whereas the city of West Sacramento and the nation have been influenced by the extraordinary cultural, ethnic, linguistic, and religious diversity of its residents. And where there are an estimated 1 billion Hindus worldwide, and approximately 3.4 million Hindu Americans live across the nation. And whereas West Sacramento is home to a significant Hindu American population that represent diverse ethnic backgrounds, including individuals of Indian, Pakistani, Bangladeshi, Malaysian, Indonesian, Afghani, Nepali, Bhutanese, Sri Lankan, Cajun Caribbean, and European descent. Whereas the city of our nation have greatly benefited from the Hindu Americans, especially through the Vindana philosophy, Ayurvedic medicine, classical Indian art, dance, music, meditation, yoga, literature, and community service. And whereas most Hindu immigrants have come to the United States as students in search of better economic opportunities and to unite with family members, while others have arrived in the country after facing religious persecution in their countries of origin. And whereas the first Hindu temple in the United States was built in San Francisco, California, and at the dedication of the temple in January 7, 1996, was proclaimed to be the first Hindu temple in the whole Western world. And whereas the Hindu Americans share the entrepreneurial spirit of America and contribute to West Sacramento's economic vitality, growth, and well-being. And whereas the Hindu Americans throughout West Sacramento celebrate numerous holidays and festivals such as Diwali this month, which commend, commemorates the victory of good over evil and knowledge over ignorance. And therefore be it hereby proclaim that the city council of the West Sacramento does hereby recognize the month of October 2022 as Hindu American Awareness and Appreciation Month, and acknowledges the significant contributions made by those of Hindu heritage to our city and by adoption of this resolution, seeks to increase awareness and understanding of the Hindu American community proclaimed on this day. Thank you. If you would like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. Yes, this is Soham Kandlae and Sabita Kandlae. Switching names from what was on the agenda, but Soham is a student and both residents of wonderful West Sacramento. But officially, on behalf of the Hindu community of West Sacramento, I would like to give thanks and commend Mayor Guerrero and all of the council members for recognizing October as Hindu Awareness and Appreciation Month. The Hindu community is proud to serve as productive members of West Sacramento. However, we've noticed recently that in parts of the world, there's a rising presence of Hindu phobia that deliberately misinterprets Hinduism. Overall, it's simply a lack of education, we think, about our worldwide faith of more than a billion people, as you point out, and your recognition of October as Hindu Awareness and Appreciation Month. It's an important milestone for the self-esteem of the many Hindu citizens here, so we greatly, gratefully accept your proclamation. Thank you. Oh, that'd be terrific. Wonderful, wonderful.
Oh, yes, of course.
Thank you. Could I give you? Would you like to take a? Oh, okay, thank you. You know how to work.
I think so.
Take a bunch in case we blink.
Next, under the city manager's office is presentation by the Sacramento Area Council of Governments on the Blueprint Project, formerly known as the Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy. Speech about why this is important, green. So, this is about a very important area that Councilmember Ledesma and I have been working on together. I just wanted to allow Mr. Councilmember Ledesma to add a few words. As Transportation Director and myself as the SECOG Board of Directors, we've been working together on projects that we've been making sure that are getting funded, such as Green Means Go and other regional transportation projects, such as our bike and pedestrian pathways regionally. And I'm really grateful for our executive director, James Corless, for being here to present to you today. And he's going around throughout our entire region presenting to city council, because this is something that the board of directors have asked, that he shared with the councils, because this is an investment we are all going to be making and have been making here in West Sacramento. And I just would like to include councilmember to share a few words about this as well.
I was hoping just to be able to heckle Mr. Corless during his presentation.
Anytime.
But for the thousands of people watching tonight, tuning in just for you, James, tonight, this is, this is a little-known agency only to us folks that are elected, that have been elected for some time, that doesn't quite know what SECOG does. And I think in my tenure on council, it took a bit for me to understand the importance of SECOG. And I would ask the public to understand, this is vitally important, I think. Mayor, you're right. And I think we all know that the partnership we've shared with SECOG through the years, not just with James, but prior to that, to Mr. McKeever, and then our former city manager, Mr. Tuttle, who headed SECOG for a time, really allowed us to, West Sacramento, to get on the trajectory we are in. They've been a partner for two decades in this endeavor. And I'll credit also over here, Mayor Cabaldin, former Mayor Cabaldin, who was a strong advocate on SECOG, a board member, and helped steer SECOG towards the relevance it has there in our region to promoting all the things it does today. This growth plan is so, is so important to West Sacramento and has been. A lot of the growth you see in West Sacramento, our transit-oriented development, probably still near Thunder, I'm sorry, but can be seen at every level, in Broderick, in, in the Washington neighborhood, in the Bridge District, and in our freeways, our mobility, everywhere. They have been partners with us. So, I'm super excited to learn more about this. I know a little bit of it. Obviously, we've been working on it. But would ask our citizens that are tuned in to stay tuned, because they'll see how relevant this is, not just for now, but for the next 10 to 20 years of growth as we can move forward. So, James, thanks for being here. Really appreciate you coming.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Guerrero. Councilmembers, really, pleasure to be here. That's a great setup. I want to do a couple of things tonight. One is to give you a preview of the next really big long-range plan for the entire six-county region that we cover. So, it is a preview, it's a teaser, if you will. We'll be coming back next year and really kind of diving deep, and we want to engage your, your residents and your constituents. Then I want to talk a little bit about, as Mayor Guerrero mentioned, some of the individual initiatives that've been working on the last couple of years that I think have particular relevance to your city and to your community. So, let me start with, because I think the last time I was in this chambers was a while ago. So, as the refresher, we are a council of governments. We represent six counties and 22 cities across the region. For, for a footprint this big, Yolo County, Sacramento, Yuba Sutter, Placer El Dorado, from the Delta to Lake Tahoe, all the way up to Yuba Sutter and, and Livoke down to Ileton, every single local government is around our table twice a month. That is very unusual. Most regional planning agencies our size across the nation rotate their seats. Some cities don't get a chance but once every five or 10 years. But, but because of our, the way that we are formed, because we actually have relatively few incorporated jurisdictions across those big six counties, everybody gets a seat at the table. And that's been the case, actually, just coming on about 20 years now. So, something, something pretty special. And we do everything, a lot of people know us for transportation, and I'll mention a couple of key transportation projects, but we do housing planning, we do economic development. We're, we're kind of here to assist you and your staff to really make us as a region bigger than the sum of our parts. We are looking for synergistic impact. And I also just want to recognize, I've got Hannah Schutten and Sam Shelton on our staff here along with me, and as the mayor said, and Councilmember Ledesma, we are on a, we're on a grand tour every jurisdiction this fall, just to give everybody an update and a preview. So, the next long-range plan, that's a lot of what we do. In fact, there's two, there's two ways really we work. One is we look really long over the horizon, we look really wide across all the jurisdictions and everybody in this region, but we also think pretty short-term because we believe that we have to actually change the way we think about transportation and mobility and housing and affordability in order to reach those long-term goals. Our plan, as the mayor said, we branded the blueprint. It's a long, formal, technical name. It's a key plan in terms of meeting state and federal regulations, but also getting key state and federal funding. The mouthful is Metropolitan Transportation Plan Sustainable Community Strategy. We are branding it the blueprint because we're approaching the 20th anniversary of the voluntary regional blueprint, which was a vision for how this entire region should grow. Again, a, a real credit to many people, Councilmember Ledesma mentioned, former Mayor Cabaldin, but a lot of people around the region who really came together and saw a future that we were forecasting of gridlock, air pollution, unaffordable housing. It did not look good. And credit to people 20 years ago, people got together and developed a blueprint, so we are now using that as a sort of a nod to the voluntary compact from 20 years ago. So, as I said, we do regional planning, and we're, we're about to put together this, this big, long-range plan that will look out to the year 2050. So, a little bit about what this plan isn't, the, as the icons, the left side of this graphic, it is not just simply compiling a list of all the transportation wish lists we have as a region or all the, even all the general plans. General plans are great. We always honor your local general plans, but honestly, even by 2050, we won't build out all the general plans, right? So, we have to, it's not a wish list, it's not a stapling exercise. Really what it is, is it's a strategic plan, so we have to be thoughtful and harkening back to the blueprint, what Councilmember Ledesma said. Part of the regional strategy, both because we want it to be true, but also because we are required now under very strict state environmental law to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, we've got to be thoughtful about how we grow and where we grow. So, putting housing near jobs and where people don't have to drive as much or own as many vehicles, that is really where your city pops and did pop a long time ago, is you have proximity, you have proximity to many things. If we can help you and your staff with all of your ambitions for your city, we know by data, by research, that your residents won't have to drive as far. We're not saying it's, we're, we're there yet, right? But it'll emit fewer greenhouse gas emissions. The more thoughtful growth we can get on the valley floor in places like your city, honestly, the less we're doing in the wildland urban interface, the less we're doing in flood zones and flood areas, right? Because we've got great levees here in West Sac. So, regional planning is a strategic plan, it's a fiscally constrained plan, it's governed by a framework that our board adopted around triple bottom line. So, yes, it's transportation, growth, land use, and jobs. It is, it is in sync with your general plans, but it's sort of the strategic plan. But we're also thinking about equity and access to opportunity and diversity, inclusion. We're thinking about economic prosperity and environmental sustainability. And finally, just to kind of end on the, what this plan is as a fiscally constrained plan, because it's hard for people to imagine 2050. It's hard to imagine what, how we might be moving and living in 2050. Imagine you have a, imagine this plan as a house renovation project, right? And your family's growing, and you feel like you need a little bit of room. So, you'd love to actually do an addition and fix the kitchen, get a really nice kitchen, you need to expand a little space, but unfortunately, your roof is leaking and your foundation needs to be replaced. And you cannot, you cannot actually do all of those things. That is the challenge we essentially have with our long-range plan. We know we're growing, we know we need to make more room for people, but we've got to do it thoughtfully and strategically, because we can't actually afford all the things. We add it all up, we cannot afford the wish list, so we've got to be thoughtful and strategic. There's the roof with a leak. Don't want that. Okay. So, I said, most people, if you do know us at all, and I understand, we're not a household name, we're really here kind of coming in behind all of our city and county members, but you know us in part through transportation because we are proud funders of things like your trail network, the Sycamore Trail Overcrossing Project, which is going to be a big one and a game changer and transformative. We've invested a lot of money on that. Your West Capitol Avenue project that I believe is now, is now complete, Sacramento Street, complete streets. And I also, I know a, a very live topic right now is the light rail extension over across the river here to Sutter Health Park. And you may think about that, as we think about the Capitol corridor extension up to Roseville is eight miles of track, you may think about light rail as a couple of miles of light rail. But what that is, it's a, it's a way to make that entire blueprint strategy work. It's a way for you to be able to hook into a regional transit network and a regional rail system, which I'll show you in a second, which in the future is going to be, it's, it's going to be all about connectivity and being part of that regional and frankly, interregional and mega-regional system. When we do this plan, and the reason that, again, we're trying to hearken back to the blueprint of 20 years ago, we don't just want to obviously give you one option and say, this is the future, because we wouldn't know that. We want to, in this case, next year in 2023, come back to you all and your, and your constituents and your residents and do some engagement around three different alternatives for how we might grow and how we might invest. Housing, growth, jobs, infrastructure. One of those sort of scenarios is going to look at not quite as much reinvestment in our existing or compact growth, but more outward growth. What if we couldn't actually figure out the economics of reinvesting in our existing communities because we lost redevelopment and we can't figure out how to make it pencil, and the barriers are too hard? barriers are too hard, which is essentially the case it is now? And what if we actually sprawled instead? What if we went into greenfield and prime ag land and the wildland urban interface? What would that look like? Not just on a map, but what would, what would it mean, right? In terms of traffic congestion, access to jobs, air quality, and all the rest of it. A second scenario, we look at, we're going to look at a bit more balance in that growth. And a third scenario, we're going to look at very much reinvesting in the existing, your existing plans for existing communities, reinvesting in existing neighborhoods, reimagining old commercial corridors with new multifamily housing. We're going to, so we're going to try to give you and the region these pretty differentiated scenarios. And again, not just as colors on a map, but actually with real numbers and measures. And when we do that, and this will be, I'll show you in a second, in spring and summer of next year, we really want your help on not just having an evening meeting at our office some night, but we want to get out into your community. We want your help to figure out, how do we engage all the residents of this region we possibly can and understand their values, their challenges, and their needs? So the timeline is that this is the setup year, and that's what I'm doing tonight, is to set this up and give you a sense of really how important this is, to do a lot of education and outreach next year. Our board will decide a sort of, they won't pick one of those three scenarios. Those, those three pathways are really just meant to illustrate potential futures. We'll have to design a plan that is, that pulls from different pieces of those three scenarios. It has to be done towards the end of next year, then we go into a lot of modeling, and we have to meet all of our federal air quality goals, our state greenhouse gas reduction targets, and those are not academic exercises. If we can't do that and we don't meet those goals, we will be less competitive or not competitive and not eligible for key state transportation funding pots of money. So this is, this is, this is an important thing, but it's an important thing that we get buy-in across the region, and we kind of do a bit of a stress test about, about how we're growing and are we really on track with what we said we wanted to do and how we wanted to grow 20 years ago in the original blueprint. So just a couple of initiatives to just highlight here. One which I appreciate Mayor Guerrero's involvement in very, very closely is a lot of our equity work and our racial equity. We have a new racial equity plan that'll be in front of our Board of Directors next week, which really tries to make a commitment by our agency to do a much better job of community engagement, engaging disadvantaged communities. We are, we're very good at planning and numbers and data. We're not as good, and we want to do this with your help, of course, at really engaging communities to shape their transportation projects. And very importantly, state funding and federal transportation funding is going to ask, every single grant application will say, how have you engaged the community in shaping these solutions? And if we don't have a good answer, we will not get funded, we will not be competitive. We have our, I think was made mention, our Green Means Go program. So to that notion of kind of infill development and revitalization, reimagining some of our older shopping strips and things like the Sunrise Mall in Citrus Heights that is being reimagined for housing and mixed use, there's a lot of barriers to those. One of the big ones actually is infrastructure, is hard mainline, water, sewer, utility, railroad relocation. You have it here in West Sacramento. And the green on this map are actually all of the locally council and board supervisor adopted green zones. This is a bottom-up, another very creative bottom-up approach to trying to really accelerate reinvestment and revitalization in existing places. So all of these green areas are now eligible for some Green Means Go funding, which is now on the books, and applications are due this fall. And this is a really important program to, again, really try to make sure that we've got our, our balance of growth right across the region. Urban infill, suburban revitalization, and thoughtful kind of phased greenfield growth. I mentioned the mega-regional network that we believe a rail connection across the river here could get, make you a part of through SAC Valley Station. We have a really exciting effort with our, what we call our mega-region working group. This is the Bay Area sister agency of ours, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, the San Joaquin Council of Governments. We've identified 12 projects, we call them the mega-region dozen. We are advocating hard, the State Capitol, the California Transportation Commission in Congress, because there is more money for infrastructure than ever before, there's also more passenger rail money. So we want better and quicker service from the Capitol Corridor, from San Jose in the East Bay to Davis, to SAC Valley Station, up to Roseville and Auburn, looking at an extension to Truckee and Reno. We're also going to get the ACE train coming up here to Sacramento within 18 months. It's going to stop in Midtown and North Sacramento and the airport, looking at an extension north to Marysville and Chico. If you think about that as sort of the new armature of this, of, it's not high-speed rail, but it's medium-speed rail, and as long as it will actually beat the car, people will ride it. So those investments are really important, they're really key. We need to do that advocating with our partners in the Bay Area and the Northern San Joaquin Valley. And again, I think the more that your community and other communities are hooked right into that system, the better off we will all be in the future. I mentioned trails, we love trails. If you actually look at a trail, an existing trail map of our region, it's a little patchwork quilt. It starts and stops. We've got some great trails, they don't connect, they don't go very far. And so we had a two-year effort here, working with all of your cities and counties, but special districts, reclamation districts. And, and we have gotten buy-off on connecting an entire paved network of trails, bicycling and walking, that would connect every single community in the six counties. So imagine going from Lake Tahoe down to the valley floor, there's a railroad corridor all the way down to Isleton, you could go to the Delta, you go to the Cape Valley, right? This is a game changer. It's almost a thousand miles of new trails, we've identified those rights of way, but it's going to be a challenge, and we're going to need everybody's involvement to make this a reality. Also, just back to our equity goals and our equity and racial equity inclusion goals, right now, lower-income communities and communities of color have less access, just by the numbers, right? These are recreational quarters that currently exist, that wealthier communities get to enjoy. I mean, everybody loves them when they're near the river and the levees, and kudos again to doing your trail network and your levy work and your levy trail. But we need more access for lower-income communities, and that is, that's a major, that's a major missing piece of all this so far. I'm just going to keep going here, I'm going to end on the last slide. These are the future council members for the next couple of decades. This is our Youth Leadership Academy. These are our high school, ninth to 12th graders. Actually, our call for applications is currently open. I know we always get good West SAC high school students. We run through an academy every other Saturday. What does it mean to do regional planning? How do we think about climate change and equity and transportation? We take them to the SAC International Airport and take them behind the scenes and show them that these are actually careers that are pretty amazing and awesome and well-paying and, and really about giving back to your community and building a place that we can all live, work, and thrive in. Applications are open till November the 4th. We'd love to get as many as possible because these students have a great time. We get, we get many of you, the local level, to come talk to them about what it's like to be in public service. We get state legislators, and we get members of Congress to come and, on a Saturday morning, kind of inspire them. And what we've learned is, we thought we'd teach them a few, few things. It turns out, they're teaching us. So with that, thanks very much for your time, thanks for your engagement. Again, that goes back decades for this city. Some important plan, planning and challenges ahead of us for sure. So we'll be back, and we're going to need your help on engaging your community. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you, James. Start on my left. Number early.
Quick question and comment. So I think your YLA students just, weren't they on a panel at the levability?
Yes.
Man.
Yeah.
You want to talk about impressive.
Yep.
These, these young youth were ready for primetime, and this is why when you said, we are not teaching them, they're teaching us. I mean, I will, I will just say just a couple of nuggets that we got from these young leaders, one of which was how we engage young people. And there was one comment in which it was, we are talking to you through social media. You keep saying to us that we need to, to come to your meetings, to come to your council meetings, to come down, but we, we are communicating with you, we're communicating on TikTok, we're communicating on Instagram, right? We are making our voices heard, you're not listening.
Yeah.
And for me, it was just so profound in coming to, when you think about real community engagement and real neighborhood, and like going to the actual community and hearing from them, when I think about the youth, I have to admit, when I, when I think about social media, I, it was like, right? Like, I go there to convey a message, to communicate, but not necessarily, it was very one directional. And I was like, man, right? Having these youth talk about their, their involvement in the community and how they want to be heard and how we keep asking them and us not really truly listening, so I just, speaks volumes for, for me. So excellent, excellent program.
Yeah, we're, we're proud of that, and we have great staff at Secog who, who pour their heart and soul into that program. And yeah, you saw the, you saw that, that kind of leadership that is emerging there. And they, they come back. So we actually have returning students now because they really love it so much. And just like honestly elected officials, there's, I'm not saying we're the only, but we're one of the few places that high school students can come and, oh, hear from an El Dorado County high school student, or what's it like to be in Marysville and grow up, right? In an ag community in the Yuba foothills. It's, it's, it's an experience I think that they really appreciate and are going to take with them.
My last comment. So I just, I had to, I had to give you lots and lots of kudos because it really was mind blown for me. Were your trails, I graduated from Folsom. I grew up riding around Folsom Lake and literally riding my bike from my house all the way, and that was really fond memory. So the idea that I could ride from my family house, we still have in Folsom, all the way down here, would be amazing when I think about just the vision of what that could mean. And so I'm very curious how, how we could support in that.
Yeah, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's, is it going to be a challenge because it is, it is, everybody owns a little, literally owns a little piece of it, right? And so.
You mean, we all have to do our part?
What's that?
I said, you mean, we all have to do our part?
Yeah, right. And if you only see that piece, you think, well, that's just a two-mile segment of trail. I mean, that's why, but if you actually zoom back and you can see the connectivity and what it might mean for this region, for the people who live here, for the people who might visit here, think about those rail services and take your bike on those trains and spend a week biking around, you know, the Delta and West Sacramento. And so it could be a game changer, but we really, we've got to get, we've sort of got to band together, and we have to figure out, like everything, the political will and the financing mechanism and many other things, but it's very exciting.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to say, I think it's fantastic, the strategic planning for the future is, is very thoughtful, and I'd often heard about Secog from the mayor. I just had a few questions. What kind of outreach are you planning to do here in West Sacramento?
Yeah, we are, I mean, we are building an outreach plan right now, like I was saying, which is, I mean, in the past, I don't, I want to say we haven't already done these things. I think we've made great strides to go to things like farmers' markets and community event, trying to, as Councilmember Early was saying, to try to meet people where they are, right? And not, and expect them to come to us. So we're building that kind of plan for 2023 right now. I know my team is really thinking about a lot of very creative ways, in, in addition to things like, you know, polling and focus groups, but if you have thoughts about, right? Where, how we can do this, and, and we would do it with your staff, this is not just Secog coming into your community, and, but we were, we're very open to ideas, this is a good time to give us some thoughts.
And I think it's wonderful also that so much consideration is being given to, you know, communities that are challenged. Many times, you know, you look at cities and you see these beautiful areas where, you know, they have new construction going on and everything, and then go just a few blocks down, you see how economically depressed an area is, no attention being paid for it. So I'm really glad that that's a definite consideration with Secog. One more question. Is this program that you have with the youth, this Youth Leadership Academy, is it statewide or is it just in certain regions?
It's not. I mean, I mean, obviously, many of you have youth commissions, right? You're pretty familiar with the idea of youth commissions. We haven't seen a lot of other regional planning agencies actually take this on. I used to work at the one in the Bay Area a long time ago. We had a high school internship program, but I think it's, that's different than, I think, really trying to get the young people engaged and excited. So I, yeah, I mean, we would love to see this happen more places.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a question? Provide feedback? Yes.
First off, let me just. Thank you. Thank you for coming and presenting to our very busy room of spectators. You know, having been here through a few of these discussions and, and being a bystander at the time, learning through the discussion about what it means to have transit-oriented development and having one of the top visionaries for, you know, that movement, sitting on this council and directing the journey for a lot of these decisions is, you know, it's just phenomenal, seeing it all fall into place. You know, I've been, you know, I said a spectator earlier, but now are hopefully a more active participant in maintaining the position of, that West Sacramento has as being the poster child for growth for the region. Watching our Washington District come alive, the riverfront, the Bridge District. To see such projects that support just that vibrant picture of our community. You mentioned it earlier, the Sycamore Trail Overpass Crossing. Now, on a personal level, I know my son plays for the West Sacramento Soccer League, and most of the players on his team live in, in different neighborhoods that are not connected, they're actually divided by West Capitol Avenue. And so we'll do a little train going around, picking up all the players when, when parents can't take their children to games. But it would also be pretty amazing to just connect the players and have the opportunity to meet on the overpass and to go to practice instead of relying on all the parents to have that, that caboose, right? To pick everyone up. Years ago, I was introduced to the vision of having this beautiful, walkable, bikeable community that didn't, that wasn't so automobile-focused. I didn't understand at the time, because at the time, you know, when you have a family of six, it doesn't seem very realistic to say, everybody, let's get on a bicycle right now, and so I can get to work and you get to school, right? At least the way the city was set up, it seemed that there were a lot of dangers, and it was, bike at your own risk. But what's, what's beautiful to see unfolding is, you know, our Fifth Street widening project, so that way people can have the confidence that they're going to, you know, make it, my commute seven mile, seven minutes away, I could make that on a bike easily. I might ruin my hairdo. But, you know, when you think about the, the health consequences, or I shouldn't say consequence has a negative connotation, but the benefit, think about, you know, the complexion of our community and coming together and, and everyone having that opportunity, it just, I don't know, it's, it's, it's fantastic to see us come up with creative ways of helping people get around, and then also investing in the vision of having this, you know, concentrated area where we would have the high-density housing and fewer folks reliant on their cars, but rather this multi-modal opportunity to, to get around. I, I was thinking earlier, and I think I got my answer, I imagine that COVID decimated our need for a lot of the bike share and, and scooter share programs, but I'm really hopeful that they do come back because when we started to think about those decisions years ago, it seemed just very, very ambitious. Via seemed almost out of the question. And now when we see it realized, it's, we think, wow, that, those were really creative and innovative things to do, and now we're the model for so many other regions. I really hope to see more folks, you know, commentate the pedestrian-scale environment as opposed to the automobile field market. So I'm talking a little bit much, I just, I'm inspired, and I want to thank Secog for the support of, of many of our projects, the Clark'sburg Trailhead, Pathway Trailhead, or Via, and a lot of our Washington District improvement. These, these have really left an indelible mark on our city, and further expansion and support of them will leave our city in a much better, our future residence.
Thank you, Councilmember. I didn't even get a chance to mention Via, but honestly, that's, that is definitely one of the success stories that we, we shop nationally, right? So, and the bike share was decimated under COVID, but it's coming back, and the market is changing dramatically, and so we are trying to learn from that and trying to figure out, what's the public-private balance of? balance of, you know, operations and subsidy and rebalancing everything else. But you're, you are, in many ways, you know, you're, you are, it sounds like, the experiment doesn't sound great, but you kind of are. I mean, you're testing a lot of these things right here on the ground and we're learning from you and a lot of other people are learning from you. So, thank you.
Yeah, we, sorry, sorry. I just wanted to comment, one more thing. You know, the, you were talking about equity and I think a lot of your comments really do key up to some of the decisions we're making, like today. Equity, we talked about it with respect to the outreach and opportunities to ensure that, you know, certain communities are not ignored and they're very participatory in the process. But the bike share and the scooter share program and VIA have been great equalizers for so many people in the community, people who wouldn't otherwise have access. And I think about the interconnectivity of having a light rail extension to other places, what access that would give people who don't have access to vehicles, who are job seeking, who are school seeking and just don't have the ability to, to access these resources. I just, it's just, it's equitable solution in so many different ways. So, thank you.
Well, and Councilmember Orozco, Mayor Pro Tim Orozco, I think for, for me, being a new councilmember, one of the things that, because we're like this, this little incubator, right, here in West Sacramento, when you have a really good idea, one of the things I've been so excited about is that we actually try it, right? There isn't, there's sometimes in this long drawn out bureaucracy, for me, that, that was one of the things that really excited me. And for VIA to already have that and then be able to implement at least very quickly, being able to go during the summer for kids who live in our north to have free rides. I don't know if you know, it's free rides from our north to our rec center to make sure we have access. When I think about equity, that was one of the things I was really excited to be able to jump in and lead. And that's, that's really part of having, being West Sacramento and being an incubator for these great things. And so, yeah.
I know I already spoke, but I'm going to take a little time to say, James, this is probably the last time, I'm only here for a couple more months, four meetings.
Don't say that.
So, and the opportunity, I can't let it go by because, A, I appreciate you being here. You've, you've delivered, even on YCTD board, were able to come and help us make a big transformation at Yolo County Transportation District. And, you know, we started our journey, as my colleagues brought up, some years ago. And, and you've, you've been there the entire time. We sat together at a couple of places and you counseled me about things to think about. And I just want to say I appreciate that. And I also, a little bit to the public and to my colleagues, because I won't be here doing these things from here on out, and I'll miss a lot of it. But to the point you just made, it's, it's a real challenge to all of you about what, how we move forward and work with, with, with SACOG and our partners in transportation. And all the projects we talked about, first of all, it has made a difference in our community. It absolutely has. The Washington neighborhood is probably the most important, like visible, like the updated streets, the, the work on, on the Sycamore Trail Bridge overpass. This, we can go on and on and on about that. But the part that I'll challenge you all to think about, this is a two-way relationship. This is a huge six-county region board with counsel, how many cities?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two cities. Twenty-two cities. Now, Mayor Guerrero's been there for a couple of years now on the board, on the Transportation Committee. There's a dynamic there. These are our partners. And this, what this comes down to is dollars and how, if, do we all, do we have similar visions? This, you pointed out by law that we have to kind of have emissions, contain emissions coming out of our cities and regions. But that's our, one of our values, it should be, like, how do we, how do we maintain climate change? How do, or how do we curb climate change? We, we have to help make those choices here. We have a vote coming up here in a second about one of those things that could help it. But it also helps, what I'll challenge you is helping SACOG do the work as well. Because as the mayor knows, she's seen it, I've seen it, there's other people that have different value systems about how that works. So one of the things that, that we have benefited from is obviously SACOG, I think SACOG has benefited from West Sacramento. Because we have helped lead and been a thought leader on these issues, from Erica Baldwin to Aaron and Marty Tuttle, who were here, and now us that are kind of helping, he needs our help, right? And that happened this, this summer. And I know, Mayor, you and I both voted on the outcome of the Measure A thing, that he, you did a great job threading a needle about how we can, and how we can, on the county side. But that matters to us. That apps, those fights that happened at the SACOG board level absolutely matter and we need to be there for them because that helps West Sac in the long run. So my last comment to you and my, to the, to the public on this issue, because it's so important to me because I've seen you help shepherd this in, is you've got to be there for them. They'll be, they've shown they've been there for us and they will continue, but we've got to reciprocate that. And that, we don't know what the fights are, but we don't have to look very far to see the ideological difference between counties on the outer parts of, of the region and what they might think about climate change and high density housing and transit oriented development or whatever else. Those, that's the political will that we have to have to help maneuver through that so that we can continue. We, we all want projects to happen in, in some of our most older neighborhoods that need more. We, to do that, we have to, we have to get in those fights. So that's my final comments on those because it is hugely important. And I just want to say I appreciate the partnership we've had and I will be around to help if I can, but I won't be elected in three months. So again, just want to say thanks on that, on your, on behalf of the city for all you've done.
Thank you. Councilmember Ledesma, and your time on all this. And you're right, past leadership, you know, there's been transitions among county supervisors and councilmembers and mayors here. So have definitely prepared what, who SACOG is today. And in addition to that, the staff participation and your guidance. When I first came on board, on the SACOG Board of Directors, which I felt was very important for me to be on, first, looking at the continuity here, I think that's important as we move forward. Because it, it was an undertaking to understand the regional concept, what does that mean? And the battlefield, that's very subtle, but that exists during, during the board meetings, preparation for that by staff, including our staff. There are times when texting Jay said, hey, can you tune in? He's, I'm already tuned in and watching. Okay, help me out here. It, it's, it's definitely an intensive workload for all of us at every, at every board meeting, you committee meeting, bike policy sharing, even, even during the bike policy. You know, I'll scroll through and see staff, our own staff, and I'm curious to think what they're thinking. And sometimes I'll, you know, just nudge for some thoughts. And the race equity and inclusion, which is near and dear to my heart as well. I have to say that SACOG is, is bold and courageous for peeling back some of the ugly that has happened in the past, some of, you know, some laws that, you know, we see that continue to perpetuate and bridge that gap from the haves and the have-nots. And what we've seen in the past, we are vocal in, you know, real appreciative of my fellow board members who present it, you know, and also teach me. So we learn from one another what's happened and how not to continue to, you know, perpetuate that. And there's, you know, just a lot of times of how do we make the difference? How do we make the change? How do we move this forward together? And, you know, those are the times when, you know, I know that in speaking with James, some of the challenges that our past mayor had on, on making that happen, just understanding why we are, we, you know, and how the, you know, the, the decisions are made today and how we move forward collaboratively. And, you know, it was challenging under, under Measure A. There was definitely a tug of war in there. Yeah, we hope that it continues to be collegial. That's always, that's always a process. So, and so we want to maintain that. And, and I look forward to another two years working in the Board of Directors and taking, taking from all of you, your input. You know, you're not, you're not bystanders, not at all. I just don't, I don't want anybody to feel that way here. The meetings are public, you can, you can tune in and watch. And, and I, you know, be more than happy to sit, you know, and chat with you and James because I know James is always accessible and he loves Frank Kitz. He just, it's a nice place.
And the River Cats, I mean, just saying.
And the River Cats. There's that. It's, it's, it's a great opportunity for all of us here, you know, and our staff who, you know, when there's a grant that comes up, I appreciate that we tune in together, making sure that nobody's being too competitive or divisive and making sure that we, we are working collaboratively in applying for the grants. And, you know, I just got to say thank you SACOG for all the grants you provided here in West Sacramento. A lot of these projects are as a result of us submitting an application and it's a lot of work that is put into preparation for that. You, you, just for those that are denied, there, there was a step missed and something that, you know, just the lack of experience or whatever it was. But we are grateful for this, you know, expertise that our staff have and the collaboration among our staff and your staff to be able to achieve the grants that we have received. I don't, I don't take that for granted at all. I, I understand the workload that's behind all of that to make that happen. And the partnership and the Green Means Go so that, you know, Aaron presented once to the board and shared the benefits of that here in West Sacramento. And then just kind of moving forward, moving that, and once you got the funding, moving that forward among our regional partners to make sure that, that they are in compliance and embracing this. It's not easy. Once we win, yet everybody's going to fall in line. It's not that. So just to continue to, you know, share some of the excellent things that have happened here in West Sacramento and all the work that, you know, councilmembers past and present have done. And, you know, exchanging these ideas and also learning from other jurisdictions what we can do to improve our, you know, West Sacramento and together in collaboration as a region. So just want to thank you for that and everybody here that has been a part of that. To make what this presentation has happened, and we have two members, I don't know which ones they are with all the masks on, but we have two members of West Sacramento here and we look forward to either them returning or having additional participation. I mentioned this to our councilmembers in our last meeting, that, you know, just to get the word out and share, you know, about this. And I also mentioned it in my two, in our two by two with the school board, that we would like their participation in the, the Youth Leadership Academy for this next year. So.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we, we, I know how wonderful, I mean, you heard, you know, Councilmember early mention how wonderful it was when she heard it at the livability summit. And I, you know, was pretty tied up today, but, you know, I heard that it was really good. So thank you so much, James.
Thank you.
Just want to, you know, add, is there, Steph, would you like to add anything? Just city manager?
I was not prepared, but I have plenty of great things to say about James and SACOG. I think it's been mentioned a few times, but I think looking at the city's history about, from the blueprint forward, a lot of the good grant programs that are, have different names today were originated in, in, in thanks to the blueprint plan being done. So West Sacramento's been very successful, as you all know, in obtaining a lot of those community design funds. Green Means Go is the newest, exciting tool we have. And I don't think James said this, but it's thanks to SACOG that became a statewide program. So we're really on the cutting edge here. All the other COGS have SACOG to thank for that. But here at home, we're always very appreciative. They're our most important funding partner, I would say, of any regional, state or federal agency. So, and I, I mean that genuinely because the evidence is there to prove it. So thanks.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, James. Okay, next on our, oh, I just want to open it up for public comment of our presentations. Madam Clerk, are there any requests to speak?
We have none.
All right. Next is our consent agenda item four through six. Are there any requests to remove an item?
I'd like to remove four.
Okay, item four. Any other items? All right. For item four? Thank you. Do you have any questions?
I actually, I actually pulled it, Mayor, just so we can get some clarification. I've had members of the public call me and ask, and I just want to be able to get as much information to them. So my first question is, how does, how does this street, this street car differ from the trolley that had been proposed?
Okay, so the, the term trolley, it's mostly in reference to a Disneyland style sort of street car that you might see. And frankly, that was a term that was tossed around by opposition groups that are in, opposed to transit in general and light rail specifically coming into West Sacramento. And so that became a tagline that was used, this is the, the West Sacramento trolley, in order to try to demean and undermine the importance of the project itself. In actuality, this is actually going to be a modern light rail extension into West Sacramento. It's going to use the exact same Siemens vehicles that were recently awarded to SACRT through their Light Rail Modernization Program. So, you know, now you go to light, ride light rail, you have to get up on the platforms that are elevated or you have to walk upstairs in order to get into light rail vehicles. All that is going to change. So with these new vehicles, which are, I believe, are the Siemens 700 models, those are all 80% low floor, which means that you would be able to just walk from the curb directly into the vehicle. Since this is a project of SACRT, it's going to be the same vehicles. So the reason why we're still calling this street car is because originally we weren't sure what the vehicle was going to be. And it was going to be a light rail circulator. And light rail circulators are often called street cars. So SACRT's own light rail system, once it leaves the UP corridor and goes on to city streets in Sacramento, technically speaking, it becomes a street car. So all you're going to see is the same service that light, is provided by SACRT for light rail coming into West Sacramento vis a vis the Tower Bridge.
Could I add onto that, please? Just to expand on the answer to that question, Jason covered the important distinction between what a classic street car is, trolley, whatever you want to call it, versus a, a modern light rail system. That's very important. The second part of it is sort of the, the function and the value proposition to West Sacramento from this, this revised alignment and system. Because this is a light rail connection, it is connecting us directly to the regional system. And that's an important distinction because the, the original street car project was contemplated more as an urban circulator. So if you, if you want to get from a, a new apartment building in the Bridge District to Midtown, that's your way of getting there. It's, it's more convenient than driving, even, you know, taking a bike or walking. This is different. This is connecting us to the regional system that already exists in Sacramento, goes all the way to Elk Grove and Folsom. And it's a two-way thing. So if you're an employer looking to locate in, in either downtown Sacramento or on our side of the river, bless you, this, this system now gives you the option to look at West Sacramento on equal footing to downtown Sacramento in terms of transit access. And that's a very different thing than, than the street car would have offered. The second part of it is how to go in the other way. And I know Jason will probably expand on this if, if given the opportunity, but I will for now. The, the system allows us to tear off from the, what'll be the stop at Riley Field with other modes of transit. I know, Councilmember Alcala, you asked, you asked me some time ago about trackless trams or bus rapid transit. So exactly that kind of idea would be well suited to serve an area like Southport or Brighton Proterick through dedicated transit lanes that connected this, this system and allows people to get to regional destinations beyond downtown, eventually the airport. So it is a very different value proposition for West Sacramento than the former street car project was.
Thank you. And can you tell us, I'd like the public to understand where the funding is coming from and how the cost is being handled?
Sure. Back in 2008, there were two ballot measures that were brought forward for West Sacramento residents. Those were Measure U and Measure V. Measure U asked what, what the residents want to do with funding that would be provided through Measure V. So with Measure V, the proposition asked for $25 million to be allocated for improvements. And Measure U asked how you wanted to spend those with flood control and with street car or like, you know, which is light rail. And so it was voted in the affirmative to spend on both flood control and street car and to allocate $25 million for the project. So what's before you right now, we're not seeking additional funding above that $25 million. What we're asking for is an allocation of 5.5 What we're asking for is an allocation of $5.5 million, with $4.3 million coming from the construction funds to be reallocated to project development funds. And the reason we need to do that is because in cooperation with the City of Sacramento, under leadership of Congresswoman Doris Matsui, as well as Councilmember Ledesma, who is there, and our mayor as well, at a recent meeting, the decision was made with leadership in Sacramento, as well as Mr. James Courtless, who is here as well from SaACOG, providing leadership on the regional level to realign the already approved streetcar project from going north up Third Street to south down Third Street, and thence along N Street to connect to existing light rail infrastructure. The reason why this was done is because there were changes that were made at Sacramento Valley Station, as I alluded to in the report, that actually cut off the streetcar project from the regional light rail as a whole. That, for us, is an untenable situation because we would just lose all of the regional connectivity with light rail. And one of our main components is having equitable access to transit options for West Sacramento. This is a solution that we were able to come up with that would allow us to continue to go to Sacramento Valley Station. But instead, we'd be looking for Sacramento to allow us to double-track down N Street. They have since put together a council resolution supporting that. They support the streetcar project as it's newly envisioned. And we have to come up with the additional funding that's required for environmental clearance and design for that. So what we have done is agreed with Sacramento Regional Transit that we're not going to provide any additional funding for this. However, we're going to find a way to reduce the construction costs and then just reallocate those funds for project development. There's ways that we can do this, either through reduced contingency, which right now, 20% of the total cost that you see for the project of $161 million is just contingency. That's the just-in-case money. So as we start getting closer to refining the project, we get further and further along, we can start to reduce our contingency because the risk starts to go away. But the Federal Transit Administration still requires that we have a certain amount of contingency built in, and that's that 20%. So until we get further along, we're just going to pull from the construction, put it into project development, and get this project moving so that we can maintain the $50 million in federal money that was reallocated to the project that was set to expire. We're still trying to make sure that our TERSA funding that was awarded to SACRT in the amount of $30 million is also maintained. So in order to do that, we have to continue to show progress. And that's why it's so urgent that we continue.
Okay, thank you. And just really quick, I think this is a great project because it's really going to cut down on the traffic congestion that we see, the gridlock that happens. So where are people going to park their cars that are going to use? Are we going to use Rayleigh Field or what are we using?
I hope people don't drive to our regional station. I would rather them pick up a VIA and instead take VIA onto the light rail system and then continue on. That would be my preference. For folks that do choose to drive, I would also hope that they would drive to someplace where they can pick up a trail. Like go to any one of our other locations. We have parking lots all over the place, and they could easily pick up a trail. We do have existing parking lots throughout town. We have Fifth and Bridge parking lot where folks often will park their cars. They'll pick up any one of our transit options that are, you know, either through microtransit, scooter, or bicycle, or they can pick up a YCTD bus and head over Tower Bridge. As of right now, we don't have many options to get over Tower Bridge. And that's why streetcar is so essential because it provides just one more option. And instead of just an option that's a 40-foot bus, it's an option for a potential three- or four-car train that can pick up up to 160 passengers. So it really does make the congestion that you see going across the bridge during peak hours much less.
If I could just add, I mentioned it earlier too, that, and Jason, you can remind me of the timeframe for this coming up, but we are initiating a study to actually look at getting ahead of the future planning of a bus rapid transit system or whatever solution we would implement to get people from other places, other parts of town, including Southport and the north part of town, to this transit center.
I do appreciate the city council allocating the funding for that.
Right. You approve that in the budget, so we're working on getting that teed up. So, and that's important to note for anyone who's looking at this, like what does it mean to me if I live in Southport? And that's not tomorrow, but by the time this project is in place, our hope is that we'll have long planned and implemented that north-south or east-west connection to this stop so that when light rail is operational, you'll have an easy access to wherever you're going in the region. Now, we also, I'll just throw this out there because we do own quite a bit of property in the vicinity of this stop. So in terms of where people do park, if they choose to not take that shuttle and have to drive for some reason, I would predict there'll be ample opportunity to have parking in the vicinity of the light rail station. So you see that in other places. It's not, again, it's not optimal when we're trying to reduce vehicle trips, but I don't anticipate that being a problem either down the road.
Okay, I asked that question because we do have retired annuities and there were some, you know, this is going to help us. And I wanted that question answered. Thank you. And I think that's all I have.
Thank you.
I think for me, as a former state worker, I remember having, trying to ride my bike all the way from Southport to downtown and, one, being dangerous. But, two, just really difficult. We know that West Sacramento is a logistical hub, not just for state workers, but for others. And the reason why, the only reason why I'm pointing this out is because some of the public comments that I've got, not here, but just walking throughout the community, not understanding that streetcar actually is light rail. And so I've clarified that over and over again. We're calling it streetcar, but that's just because that's how we build it, right, for the funding. And so we have to keep it in there, but it really is light rail. And it's been like, oh, okay. But also I've gotten, well, who's really going to ride? Who would possibly ride this? And I think we don't really understand, like sometimes as a community, the folks throughout, who, again, may not work here but live here and then are trying to get out and then trying to get back. And so it really is forward-thinking, and I'm extremely excited about it. So thank you.
Go ahead. Yeah, it is because this is also probably the last time I get the vote on the streetcar. And this will be happening a lot in the next three meetings, I think. But first of all, Jason, thank you for all your work. And no one sees the work you do. We've worked together quite a bit over the last, whatever it's been.
Eight years.
Eight years? It's been eight years? Good lord. But thank you for all the work. You've been so persistent and dogged in how do we keep this moving forward? And I get the confusion around, in the public around the trolley, I've heard that through the trolley, the streetcar, we don't need it. And I'm always intrigued by that notion because it's not really, for the people asking, it's probably not for them. And the people I think about when I think about the streetcar and light rail, those who kind of afford a car, don't need a car, and they spend, you know, this is the part we got to fix too, which you've been helpful on in the yellow bus, is how do we get better bus service into Sacramento where they may work or get to a store? None of this happened by accident. I wanted to say, like, none of this happened by accident. We felt the community. They weren't communicating, no one came to us and said, we need VIA. Nobody did. Right? They came to us and said, I can't get around. I can't get ice cream because I gotta take a half hour to get to the Walmart on a yellow bus. And those who were there at the council meeting when we said, that's enough, we've got to come up with a different solution, and we went to this, we were already on the path for bikes. And streetcar's always been there as sort of completing that vision. And I'd also ask folks to recall, early two years ago when this council was seated, Sarah Strand, who brought us VIA and helped us lead us through that, but she brought us a mobility hub, right? And we talked about that concept, and we actually are continuing that work at the mobility hubs where people can get a scooter or a bike or a bus stop that will lead to a light rail station or a BRT station. This all hangs together. So I have been super proud to work on streetcar since I got here, 10, 12 years ago. And tried to champion it even in the face of neighbors who hated it. Sorry, Mayor, but you hated it for a while. But now I appreciate you supporting it because it's easy to pick on, because nobody perceives where it's going. But I ask council to keep this in your mind. This generation that we're currently living in, they won't feel it, but the next one will. Think about all the housing that's being built right now in Washington neighborhood, in the Bridge District, right? The transitory development's coming, the affordable housing that's coming. The next generation of West Sacramento people are coming, and they will be so thankful to us and you for keeping this moving and having that option so they can get around and don't have to pay for a car. They don't have to, they could live their life. And they have quality of life, that they can get to a place in Sacramento without spending a half hour, 45 minutes on a bus ride. And so I'm super proud of the work that's being done. I hope this happens. I hope I'm here for the day where we, you know, drive the bike or whatever we do, and whatever we're going to do on the streetcar. And I'd ask again the council, just as we did the last one, work with our partners because SaACOG's been there for us. I know they left, but they've been there for us on this project. SACRT, we have board member friends that are over there. Some opposed it. There was actually a person on SACRT on the vote two years ago who said, who the heck wants to go to West Sacramento from Folsom? And there were people in Sacramento who said, why is it, why, why would I go over to Rayleigh Field? There's nothing there, it's a bridge to nowhere. Which was an insult to me and a West Sacramento resident because that's not the point. The point are families and working folks and people that need that option. So I'll ask my colleagues, and again, whoever's sitting here after me, that this, keep this on, please. Try to find the bandwidth and the strength to kind of keep this going. And I thank staff for all their work on it. And I'm just, I want to make that statement for all of them. Thank you.
Councilmember Ledesma, thank you very much. I appreciate that. I think I should probably note that I just got back yesterday from the California American Planning Association Conference, where we actually met to do a presentation on mobility hubs. It was specifically Chris Doherty from SaACOG was there, Punam from WRT, Lisa Marie from WSP, Kit Chu from VIA, and myself. It was very well-received. We had a packed crowd that were very interested in, what is it that made the Mobility Action Plan so special? And the number one focus we had was how we built in equity through the entire process from start to finish, using the data from VIA, where people were going, using demographic data to figure out where was the greatest need, how we could respond to that need. And I think that's also the reason why we just won an award of excellence by Sacramento did for the Mobility Action Plan that it's going to be awarded to us on October 19th by the APA. So I'm very pleased with the work that Sarah Strand did, who led that effort and the whole transportation staff.
Great job.
Yes, very good.
Mayor, one quick question. Can you tell us when ground breaks?
So I put a schedule in there.
You did, 2029?
We're looking at breaking ground 2027, completing 2029.
Awesome.
As long as everything is on track.
Been like that for a while. Well, since Councilmember Ledesma mentioned my name, I just wanted to kind of reframe what exactly I was opposed to. You know, the light rail initially, when the voters had approved it, was going through West Capitol. And being on the Economic Development Advisor Commission back then, when it was, you know, being discussed, I was very supportive of the idea. And since then, you know, the line got shortened quite a bit since then. The cost went up significantly. It looked like it was out of reach. And there was no clear path at the time to determine how we were going to afford this and whether we needed to put in more money for this. Today, we have a clearer path. And today, we have some modifications on our partners as a result of some changes that have happened. Modifications where we think that is going to positively lead us to an accomplishment. And I think that those changes here today on the agenda helps us move this forward so that it can be realistically implemented. Now, again, this was supposed to be done. We were supposed to have a light rail moving today.
Five years ago.
Five years ago. But it hasn't happened yet. And, you know, I have been working with Congresswoman Matsui, our champion, who has secured the federal funding and who continues to be in communication with our federal partners and who are providing funding and resources, you know, at the federal level. So, yes, meeting, you know, with President Biden and the administration. This is a project that I've looked at where, you know, Tower Bridge, you know, we look at the gateway projects that are building and reducing our impact fees so that we can bring in more affordable housing. And among those that we are trying to get mobile and the alignment of the tracks, you know, is, for me, a big positive change. I think the cost at the time was unclear, how are we going to be able to pay for this? But we actually came to an agreement, which is, I think, more meaningful for all of us at this point in time. And, you know, I'm hoping, you know, that, you know, we can move forward and see some progress in a timeframe that, you know, hopefully, with all of us here, I know Councilmember Ledesma's moving on, we can see some progress and continue to make some decisions that will lead to a light rail that is going to be in completion soon and on time. So I just want to be able to reflect a little bit about what's changed. Councilmember Ledesma.
No, as I said, as long as you support it now, I'm happy. And I understand.
Well, I thought you were talking about VIA, Councilmember.
What's that?
I said, I thought you were talking about VIA, Councilmember Ledesma. I didn't think you were.
No, you mentioned light rail. Well, just for the record, I also opposed it along with a lot of people in my community, but it's a different day.
A lot of people in the community. Yeah, a lot of people in the community. It was an easy target, right? And it really was. And, but the most important thing is that this council, in going forward, kind of stays on it because there's so many variables. We, if we would have had our choice, this would have been built five years in a route that probably would have, the construction costs were the ones that killed it. But also, Sacramento's here, and I'm sure they're not watching, but Sacramento wasn't.
This is recorded.
So they know, they know. But, you know, having to work with SAC City in that process became a challenge in and of itself, I know. So, again, we are where we are. And the most important thing, you're right. I failed to bring up Congresswoman Matsui, who I've been working with for some time. She, yes, she asks, every time I see her, every time I, like, we're going to get this done. And my, that's, my ask of all of you is to keep on this because it requires this persistence, which Jason does. And we have to have as a community because a generation of West Sacramentoans will thank us later, right?
Well, I can't speak to five years ago because I've been on this council for almost a year. October 19th is when I was sworn in. Oop, oop. But I can say that over the past year, we have almost been unanimous in agreeing on these things and issues like this. And so I'm sure, moving forward, we will continue.
Thank you.
In that unity.
Comments among the council members? All right. At this point, thank you, Jason. Appreciate you coming up and answering all the questions very well. I would like to ask the council members if you wanted to separate this or if you wanted to just take it as a, you know, submit a motion for...
I'll move the recommended actions of the consentogen.
I'll second.
All right. Councilmember Ledesma moves. Mayor Protem Orozco seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Early?
Aye. Councilmember Alcala?
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Orozco?
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero? Mayor Protem Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
All right, thank you. And this is unanimously approved.
Again. Thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. All right. We don't have any public hearings, no regular agenda items, and we will now move to the General Administration function, Part II, is our council communications from our assignments. Are there any other, are there any, no?
Oh, I did. Earlier today, we had a meeting of the West Sacramento Port Commission, and we did approve a real estate agreement, I think we approved it, right? Jeff was there, with Fulcrum and partners on Seaway property for development. And there's some, we actually, part of that agreement was to give delegated authority to the port CEO to complete some final negotiations. But it's a really exciting opportunity for the Seaway. That connects with some issues, things that are happening in the city, so, in a lot of fronts. Excellent, excellent work.
Yes. Councilmember Early.
So, not necessarily from, since our last meeting, but on Monday, we will actually be interviewing executive directors for the Yolo County Housing Authority. And so I will have more to update, hopefully, the next time we meet. But I have a fun-filled Monday of interviewing folks.
Yes. Mayor and I met on Monday, the two-by-two. Aaron was there as well. And that's the two-by-two with the city and the school. And Superintendent Hildreth, from Washington Unified School District, made a presentation of the district's strategic plan, called Equity Strategies, I believe. And also on the agenda, we spoke about Rock the Block. That's coming up this Friday and Saturday. There was discussion on the water policy coordination between the city and the school. And there was also discussion on fentanyl awareness outreach. Then, on the Yolo Salon, excuse me, the Yolo Salon of Air Quality Management District, we are also in the process of selecting a new director. So I'll have more information on that later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Alcala. On the city-school two-by-two, what was also raised was the water quality issue, I think. Did you mention that?
I did, but if you could give more detail, because I was having trouble with my audio.
That's okay, yes. On the water quality issue that is occurring in one of the schools, there was a study done, and the water...
Riverbank.
Riverbank. And the water is not toxic. However, the color of the water remains, and that remains to be a concern. And so there is an effort by the school district, which they put together a website to be able to provide information, to rebuild trust among the parents, and, you know, everybody that attends the school, so that they can continue the dialogue. And the dialogue will continue. Want to make sure that the water quality is clean, and I'm sure there'll be, you know, continued work on that. And want to add that our water is very clean. So we have the best water in the nation, which is why we have, we are a food hub.
And breweries.
I want to compliment our staff for doing a lot of work. If anybody's checked out the water treatment plant, it is amazing. We do need some work, you know, to continue to make sure that it's, you know, taken care of. So thank you so much to the staff for doing an excellent job there. The Equity Strategic Plan is the school district and city council, I think city council members were invited to participate, stakeholders, and I think our personnel were also included in the planning for Equity Excellence Empowerment for every student, every day. And the strategic plan has a number of areas of focus, four pillars. And it is equity focused on teaching and learning, safe climate and equitable access for all, strong partnerships with families, learning and growth opportunities for all employees. And there are several goals for student success included in the plan, and equity principles. And so they did give us a three-pager to be able to share with you. It's a very lengthy report. But I think it's important, because we are going to continue to partner and work with the school district in the implementation of the strategic plan. And so, looking forward to that. The concern that you heard earlier around fentanyl is going to be, we recommended, among our first responders and the school district, to do some public outreach, you know, just ways to educate the members of the community as Halloween comes up. And you have, you know, our kids are vulnerable, and, you know, in accessing, as they go to Halloween, trick-or-treat candy. And so we just want to make sure that we educate members of our community to be careful of the candy they receive. And we are really excited about the fact that the school, I mean, not the school, our parks in wreck, and many of our departments will be participating in our own safe trick-or-treat. So looking forward to that. And in addition, just wanted to add just a big plug on Recovery Cafe's grand opening today. Just very touched by how many members of the community actually did attend, and were aware, sat in on the orientation, and demonstrated commitment to continue to participate. These are members of the community that, I think, even among the staff, and those that are providing the orientation who had not known before. So we're learning, you know, more and more every day, that there are people out there who are ready to receive support, and really excited about the Recovery Cafe's involvement in the community, to extend the outreach and connecting them to the support that they need. In addition, I wanted to add that last Friday, I was invited to the White House for the Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. And I was among a selected group of participants for a special White House briefing with Latino leaders around the country. We heard from Emmy Reese, Assistant to the President Director of the Office of Political Strategy and Outreach, Isabel Guzman from the Small Business Administration, Sabrina Boozbar from the Office of Public Engagement, Alejandro Mayorkas, Secretary of the Department of Homeland Security. The exchange among the participants and the administration reviewed the initiatives that have been achieved under the Biden administration to build an economy that works for working families, including the Latino communities. And the Inflation Reduction Act lowers prescription drug costs and other healthcare costs for seniors, and energy costs by offering tax credits to replace items like air conditioners, water heaters, furnaces, et cetera. In addition, as you noticed during the pandemic, we had immediate access to vaccines and testing, thanks to the COVID-19 recovery efforts and our partnership with the county and healthy Davis together. Those accomplishments did help us to recover quickly, and everybody here put a lot of time and effort into that. And it helped us to open up our doors and keep our COVID rates low. In addition, it offered immediate relief to working families with a direct subsidy for those who qualified. And through programs we've implemented with federal funding, such as our California Hispanic Chamber, which is helping individuals who would like to open up a business, or individuals that are, you know, providing a business, to be able to understand how to access resources through COVID-19 recovery. And these are resources that are reaching directly to our Hispanic community. And the participants in the group raised some gaps that we are still experiencing. And so we are going to continue to work with the administration to bridge those gaps, which is exciting news. And we're also going to share some of the success stories, such as Welcome Baby, which is serving about 66% of those here in West Sacramento are Latino. And so those are initiatives that we also like to elevate and raise as to what impact the federal administration is having in our community, and also see what we can do to continue to make some changes to bridge those gaps. So just want to thank my colleagues for all the work that we've been doing to make that happen here, and know that I'm elevating what your accomplishments are. So there are no council appointments, but an announcement that we do have appointment applications, which are available online for next year's round of appointments, if you could also share with your colleagues and residents and people in the community, that that application is online. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Or they can contact the city clerk's office, and we'll provide them with a hard copy application.
Thank you so much. And when does that date close?
November 11th.
So it's coming up. Okay. So yes, just remind, you know, individuals that you would like to apply to do so before November 11th. Next, we have our council calendar.
Hi, good evening. It was mentioned previously, but this Thursday, I'm sorry, this Friday and Saturday is the Rock the Block. The city is partnering with Habitat for Humanity for home repairs, community projects, and community cleanup in the Broadjacket Bright area. And then, coming up next week, on Thursday, the 13th, the police department is having their new hire and promotion ceremony in the Galleria at 5:30. And then, on Saturday, the 15th, Fire Station 45 is having their open house from 10 to 1. That's it.
City manager report?
No report tonight. Thank you.
City attorney report?
All right. No future agenda item request by council, and I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have one. Spanish Heritage Month is in October, so I'm hoping that we can have a resolution for that.
So a resolution process, who would have that information?
Yeah, just to reiterate.
I thought we were in Spanish Heritage Month now?
We are.
Oh, okay.
But we haven't, okay.
The typical process is, you know, it's kind of a two-step process, where the request needs to be sent to be placed on consideration for future agenda items. So that's typically the week before the council meeting. And then, assuming it has no opposition, or it, you know, has consensus, it goes to the next meeting. But the problem here is practically that, you know, we wouldn't be able to do that in October. There is the option to do a mayor proclamation, which can be...
Yes, I can do that.
Which can be done.
I can do that. All right. Sounds great.
Yeah. But we can coordinate about the best option. Thanks.
Isn't it in October 15th, or does it?
We could have a...
Yes, okay.
Is that, you said Spanish Heritage Month?
Hispanic.
Okay, Hispanic, okay. I thought we had already approved a list of...
I thought it started September 15th.
I don't think we ever got that list, right?
It may have.
No, there is a list.
There is a list?
Yeah, I mean, we can review that to make sure.
I thought it was on there.
Was it on there?
Let me check on that list.
Yeah.
That's right. Well, if it was on there, then it should have been done. And we could do it.
I don't know the timing of the specific event, so we'll just want to check to make sure we have the right, we're talking about the same thing. So it'd be helpful if I could get an actual request, just to make sure we have the correct, you know, the correct event to recognize. And then if it's not on our list, and it should have been, then we can reconcile that.
Okay. Going back to Mayor Protem, you know, Orozco's comment, if it was on there, does it automatically get approved, so we don't need council approval?
Yeah. I mean, if it's on the list, and something we would normally do, then it wouldn't need to be requested as a future item. So we could do it on October 19. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. So we'll double-check the list.
Okay. Thank you. All right. And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Madam Clerk, Mayor Protem Orozco moved, and Councilmember Early seconded. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Early.
Aye.
Councilmember Alcala.
Aye.
Councilmember Ledesma.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Orozco.
Aye.
Mayor Guerrero.
Aye.
All right, we are adjourned.